Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We shall begin our council meeting. Today is Wednesday, February 17, 2016. It is 4:30 in the afternoon. May I please have a roll call? Brad.
Here.
Pete.
Here.
Greg.
Here.
Zach.
Here.
Randy.
Here.
Thank you. First on the agenda is public comments. There's none. So we'll move on to number two, the consent agenda. Do you have any questions regarding the consent agenda? And if there are no questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Last request for any questions, comments. Roll call, please. Zach.
Aye.
Pete.
Aye.
Greg.
Aye.
Brad.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
Thank you. Going into new business, number three is considering the support for the Northwest Iowa Regional Trust Fund. Before we dive into that too much, Scott is going to share a little bit of information with us.
Yeah. First thing, I'm just going to make you aware, what I am going to ask the council tonight is to not take any action on this unless you wanted to. Been doing a little additional research. We've been part of the Northwest Iowa Regional Trust Fund for a number of years, probably six, seven years since they started this. It's more or less a housing, income-based housing rehabilitation program. We've been more active in the past. We actually had, Mark Gall before was actually a member of the committee, so was very involved. Right now, there's an O'Brien County Supervisor that is a member of that committee. We actually had a handful of projects that were actually funded here in Sheldon as part of that program. The other reason is, is it was a little bit easier in the past is because from an old housing rehab program, we actually had funds available through O'Brien County. As you see, based on the request, we only had remaining $190.44. So thus, our local match would now be $2,310.48. Carol Kaiser with Northwest Iowa Planning and Development Corporation, they actually facilitate this program. I've reached out to her. She's been, I don't know if she's gone on vacation or where she's at. She's not going to be back in until next week. I'd like to do a little research, get more information from her. How many homes in Sheldon that we have benefited from in this program? What have we had the last year, a couple of years in the program? More or less, take a look at kind of our bang for our buck by investing the $2,300. How many dollars are even available in the total program? I think last year, and don't hold me to this number, was around $180,000 for the six-county region. So if we're inserting this kind of money back into it, I want to make sure we get our payback out of the program. So if council's okay, I'll do a little more research and hopefully for the March 2nd meeting, I'll bring it back. Doesn't appear to be a timely thing that we have to take action today. So hopefully by submitting that in March, yeah, we should be okay.
I think it would be interesting to see just how many homes have.
Yeah, just give you an update on the program, maybe since its inception, the dollars and cents that have been done here in town, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Then we will wait until March 2nd on that. And then next, number four on the agenda, discussing our franchise renewal agreement with HTC Communications. It's been a long time, a 20-year agreement that we've had in place. So before we just jump into it, I think there's some things that have to be reviewed, and I know Micah may share a little bit with us, as well as Scott has met with Dave. And if you want to bring us up to that, bring us up to date on that, too, Scott.
Yeah, just a little brief background here. We were made aware, actually from HTC, they're required to enter a franchise, a cable franchise with the city of Sheldon. Dave contacted me a couple of weeks ago that our 20-year term was expiring the end of January. Wasn't aware of that. We actually even had a term on there. It's not, I haven't gone and read that franchise for quite some time. Started in 1996. So basically did have a conversation last week with Dave Rock and with Ruth, his daughter, that's now very involved in the corporation. They, of course, are very interested in extending an additional franchise with the city of Sheldon for cable TV. So I immediately contacted Micah to get kind of some of his thoughts on kind of our process procedure as far as going forward. I guess what we're kind of maybe looking for from council, and Micah can chime in, too, here, is more or less general direction from the council on how you want us to proceed. And Micah can share, as alluding to this, you know, he's not necessarily versed 100% in cable franchises, whether we want to seek outside counsel or give general direction. If we're somewhat content with where we're at, we want to make sure it meets all the state and federal regulations since it was 1996, since we entered that cable franchise, to make sure we're more or less up to snuff on where we need to be at. So with that, Micah, do you have any additional thoughts, I guess, or comments?
I do, thank you. As both the mayor and our city administrator mentioned, this is a 20-year cable franchise agreement. When it was put in place, there was a certain body of law in place, and since that time, both the federal and state law has changed somewhat. The good news is, is that under our current agreement, I believe we're at the maximum rate allowed at 5%. So we're taking advantage of that. The concern, of course, is that if another long-term agreement is put in place, without taking this opportunity to review some of the terms, the city may lose out on the opportunity to look at what needs the city has that may not be addressed in the current agreement or what they'd be proposing to renew it for. There's not an opportunity to look at perhaps deficiencies in performance that could be addressed in the language of a new agreement. So I would suggest that the time is now to do some of those things just from the perspective of, what do we want out of our cable franchise? And can we somehow put those into an enforceable agreement? So there's one component. The other component is just the technical legal side, as Scott suggested. Are we in compliance with, is currently required? So those are some things to consider. There's different routes you can take in getting the franchise. There has to be a franchise of some sort. There's the federal path, which is probably not utilized as often. In fact, I think that window may have closed already for HTC to take advantage of some of those procedures. You can now get your franchise through the Iowa Utilities Board, which is a fairly expedited process, comparatively speaking. And that is probably what we'd be looking at. But as mentioned by our city administrator, we would need some direction on how thorough of a review you'd want from both our needs being met and are we in compliance from a legal perspective? So that's what I have to report on our cable franchise agreement.
The cable franchise only refers to television, right?
This is only the cable franchise is what this would address.
Okay, so that, there is no franchise for internet or any other services, correct?
That's an excellent question. Of course, our cable provider is also our internet provider, and would be interesting to see if and how potential issues on the internet side could be addressed in this context.
Worth asking and looking into, I guess. But as of right now, the franchise in place in regards to cable TV.
And is this something, Micah, that you're comfortable with checking into?
I am comfortable with aspects of it. I do not hold myself out as an expert in federal and state cable regulations. I've reached out a little bit to the Iowa Municipal Attorneys Association to see if there's any recommendations. Had a little bit of feedback. But again, depending on how in-depth the council would want to go on this, I think it would be appropriate to at least coordinate efforts with someone or a firm that does this on a regular basis.
I would agree.
It's not like we do this every year, every five years. It's been 20 years since we've done it.
How much has changed in the cable world?
There's been a lot in the federal regulations, I'm sure. So I think it would be beneficial to seek some additional resources.
To put it succinctly, you can either pay your city attorney to get up to speed, or you can pay someone who has gotten up to speed and charges accordingly. So that's probably what you're looking at.
Appreciate your honesty there. Would you even recommend someone to us, Michael, Micah, who maybe we could use?
I have some ideas. I'm going to withhold names at this point just because I want to know exactly where you're going. There's one Iowa attorney that I've had a little bit of correspondence with. That would be a good starting spot. And then perhaps we'd have to start looking a little further to maybe Des Moines or Omaha, Minneapolis, to find someone that's, depending again on how in-depth you want to get.
Right. Well, I think it would be beneficial. It's been 20 years. We should make sure that our needs are met and that we are in compliance, so.
And in that context, I know that, I would assume that HTC also has council that would be well-versed in this area.
Sure.
And I think it'd be appropriate to reach out to him or her, too, and just see what their proposal is and what they have in mind. And that would also perhaps funnel us in a certain direction.
So we have not seen a proposal from them of any sort?
Okay.
Mr. Rock did send me a generic kind of pattern of a franchise, but it really didn't even reference a cable franchise. They do have an attorney that represents HTC that is out of Des Moines, that does what their franchises and some of their other legal type issues, so. Surely he did offer, but that's from their standpoint of offering their services, of whether we'd want to have an attorney represent the city of Sheldon. I, too, think would be beneficial, maybe in working with Micah a little bit, too, going forward.
And we don't need outside counsel or even necessarily my direct assistance to address the question of, are there concerns that the citizens of Sheldon have or needs that the citizens of Sheldon have that we would want to make sure are addressed in some way in a new agreement?
One thing about entering into a franchise with a cable company, we're eliminating competition then, too, aren't we? Someone else can come in here?
No. In fact, the way this is set up is that, or is how I understand it, it doesn't, it's not exclusive. If you would look at Chapter 112 of our city code, it's a non-exclusive right and privilege to construct, direct, operate, and maintain the cable network in the city of Sheldon. But if someone else would want to come into Sheldon, they also have to be franchised.
Okay.
Anybody who wants to provide these services in the state of Iowa has to be franchised.
But it doesn't buy them protection from not allowing competition. So if XYZ Company wanted to provide cable services in Sheldon, they would have to come to the city of Sheldon, enter a franchise, but it doesn't eliminate them from being able to do so. That's the same, yeah, question we talked about, too, kind of the same lines.
So at the end of the day, what do we hope to accomplish with it? I mean, what is there to gain?
That's what we're asking.
What?
That's kind of what we're asking. Is there anything from a service standpoint that you feel we're missing or lacking? Do we allow a period of time from public input, like Micah mentioned, as far as discussions of franchise or their services that we're lacking on?
But is legal counsel the place to go for that?
Well, that's what we're distinguishing between that on the one hand, which is what do we want or need, which I don't believe we need extralegal counsel for. And then the other issue is, is the franchise agreement itself consistent with current law?
Because it's been 20 years, right?
I would assume they're going to propose a new agreement, not renew the old agreement.
No. There's obviously with change in state and federal regulations, there's going to be new language that's required by the Iowa Utilities Board to have in your franchise, and that's where we need to have that input to determine what goes in there. But then are there other things that you want to negotiate?
Do we need that input or do they need that input? Who's going to pay the bill?
Well, it's a matter of, I'm sure they'll come up with an agreement. Do we want some type of, to make sure it covers with what we want it to cover on our end?
So we need to see what they're going to come up with. One question I do have is, and I don't know if this will fall into that, but when HTC had that $5 increase without going through the proper channels, does that fall anywhere in with this, with compliance or any of their, like, regulations or whatnot?
In order to increase fees and assess fees, you have to be in compliance with the applicable regulations.
And he would have to follow the channels, like, coming through even though we don't have that or that board hasn't met in years?
You know, that's an example of a question that could be asked is, we've had this board, thought we had a board, but just given how times have changed and personnel that was available, it just kind of fell to the wayside.
Right.
Are there other options? Or must we have that board if we want to take advantage of?
And what was that board established for? I mean.
It was established under the then-existing franchise agreement. I think it was kind of the, I'd have to go back and look, Randy, but my recollection was they had kind of authority to review proposed rates. They were kind of who the cable franchisee would report to, and they in turn would report to the council, so.
And that more than?
In all area, I mean, if you operate a cable station company, no matter what town you're in, you have to have a franchise, or is that?
That's my understanding.
That's the state of Iowa, yeah.
Yeah, it's the only thing that I think you're required to have. You don't take like a Mid-American, you don't even talk about franchise. You're not required to have a franchise with them. You can choose to do so, but cable franchise, you're required to have one to operate within the city.
477A.2, after July 1, 2007, a person providing cable service or video service in this state shall not provide such service without a franchise.
Well, when, did Dave say at all when he might have something for us to consider?
He did not. I guess we, the plan was to have, I guess, a discussion here if you want me to go back to him to put something together for us to consider. Maybe first, as far as a template to review, it's maybe the starting point to get the ball rolling.
I think we need to make sure that we're up to date, first and foremost.
Yeah, Micah, with outside consult a little bit, start working through some of the parameters and.
See if any citizens call us and.
Yeah, if you get any comments and feedback, we can address that as well.
Correct.
And then we'll just bring that back, March 2nd, a couple of weeks, four weeks?
As we get information.
As we get information.
Is that safe instead of putting a date on it?
Yep, as we get information, let's do that. Right, we don't want to bring it up.
Pretty quick turnaround to put a lot of stuff together, so.
We can start asking around, see what the public has to say.
Ball's kind of in his court. I mean, the franchise has expired, so it's in his best interest to keep the process moving, so.
But that would be something for us to look at as far as increases, since we don't have that cable TV commission.
Have we ever looked at with surrounding towns, who provides service to them? Were we falling in the rate area for cable? I mean.
I have not. I've never done that.
I don't know if there's a study that can be done to say, all right, HTC, you're in the ballpark, or?
I don't know, yeah.
Only that's in here is they're required to provide 36 channels. We've got that covered.
That's the basic.
Got the basic, yeah.
Not if you want the basic plus, okay.
That's stuff we'd need to research, what's negotiable, what's not.
Sure.
What can we look into? So we'll appreciate the feedback, so.
We'll start pulling, and if you hear anything, please, you know, let Scott know as soon as, once you hear something, so we don't let any information fall through the cracks. All right. Any other discussion then on HTC? We're clear on where that's going to lead us, possibly? All right, let's move on. Number five on our agenda is, we're just, we're having an update on the final design plans that have been coming along in the event center. And they do, Scott did put together 910, maybe Todd put it together? But you're going to run it for us? Just a presentation. See where we've been at? I know Brad and Zach and Scott and Todd, have you been on all that, too, as far as final design and stuff? So it's been a little while since we've seen where things are. So go ahead and let the slideshow start and the presentation.
So basically, just to kind of bring you up to speed, we're kind of moving through the process of the final design. Kind of what our intent is here, kind of want to share, you know, some more detailed information on where we're at, kind of the floor plan, the look of the building, some of the items in the building. We're not going to get into a whole dissertation unless you want to about colors and all that sort of stuff, kind of where we're at there. But kind of our hope is that the March 2nd council meeting, Mike Bell from RDG is planning to actually come here, make more of a full-fledged presentation on kind of the final design. But kind of as we move through this, want to give the council an update and certainly an opportunity to share any thoughts, comments, concerns as we move through the building elements. So we're going to kind of go through schedule here a little bit, some of the financial information, where we're at as of today, and then kind of proceed from there. So as you basically see here, here's just kind of a backdrop of the building, and we'll get into some more of the elements as we kind of move forward here with more pictures. So let's go to the floor plan here, Todd, on the next one. Just a few items here on the floor plan. And this is a little bit tougher to see, but I'm going to point out a few items here. The general gist of the floor plan has not changed. Basically, the square footage of the entire building. We have changed some of the elements on the interior due to just various reasons. One, basically coming in here is kind of your main front entrance area through the vestibule here. We have shrunk the size of our foyer. It was a little over 900 square feet. We're at approximately 560 square feet as of right now. So we kind of changed some of those elements. One of the big reasons is, is we actually increased the size of our storage rooms. What we asked them to do is to kind of give us a general layout of, all right, based on X number of tables, chairs that we have in this facility for the number of events we're looking at, just on storage room capacity alone, how much room do we have in our storage rooms? A lot, to be honest with you, is going to be determined based on the type of chairs we purchase. Chairs can take up a lot of room depending on how you stack them and how you store them. Tables are tables, you know, the storage and space that's going to require. So we increased these. Each storage room is approximately 362 square feet, and we got two of those. So we feel a little more comfortable now. We actually went in the upstairs room here. Todd kind of laid out some chairs, so we got a better feel of exactly what the size of those storage rooms were. General footprint here of the great room is the same. We haven't changed that. We changed different seating arrangements. So based on this right now around all the round tables, this would be set up for 420 seated around here. Of course, this is a collapsible wall by the boardroom here, so you could put more round tables over here. Once again, this is kind of based on kind of a wedding-type setting with a head table up here. We changed that kind of around, if you remember initially, they kind of showed that up here. The problem you're going to have with putting a lot of stage and type items up here, you lose some of your view from this corner here. So this being kind of a main front, and there's numerous different settings in how you set it up. You're going to have some people that might set it over here or on this side. Some of the AV equipment, we're still working on of having, you know, a screen up here, a screen back here, a screen here, and a screen over here. So those are items we have to work through as well. The other area is the kitchen. We've kind of modified and changed that around a few different times. We have a walk-in cooler as of right now. In the original plan, we had a walk-in cooler and a walk-in freezer. We did kind of remove that for the simple fact, we're not sure if we need a walk-in freezer. Square footage-wise of taking up space, we have a commercial-grade freezer built in, commercial-grade dishwasher. We do have a stove and an oven, and then a lot of counter space here for prep work and stuff in the kitchen. We don't see it as being a full-service kitchen as far as preparing food, but a full-service kitchen for caterers, heating food, serving food and stuff out of here for your large venues and events. I think that's the general gist of the floor plan. And Zach and Brad and Todd, speak up, or any questions? Pete, you had questions?
How many divisions can the room be divided up into?
This is going to be split into three different rooms. So right here is going to be, and you'll see in some of the pictures coming up here pretty quick, there's actually going to be a retractable wall that comes out of the ceiling and drops down to the floor, and the other one's right here.
Oh, okay.
So they left, put left two in? We'll see, okay.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, two basically drop-down walls there, and then this is also a collapsible wall here by the boardroom.
Does that come out of the ceiling also, then, or is that?
That does not. These are doors, correct?
So they slide back and into a pocket somehow?
I think these are pocket doors, aren't they?
I assume, just from the way it looked.
Yeah, the way the setup was.
All right.
So then our boardroom, we got kind of a green room here per se, wedding receptions, changing room, multipurpose room, one office, a couple of different mechanical rooms, electrical room, another mechanical room here, couple of different entrances to the side here through vestibules. This would be kind of a service door with this area back here as well. Here's a covered patio. This right here, and we'll have other pictures here pretty quick. This is going to be kind of a collapsible wall, good-sized door, so if you have to bring bigger items in for any type of shows or whatever, this would be kind of the main entrance coming through here. What's that, about a 12-by-12 entrance? 12-foot wide by 12-foot tall?
Close.
Or 12-by-10, 10-foot tall?
It was just under 12.
12-foot or whatever to meet kind of our height of our building, so. Yeah. Kate, you want to move to the next one there, Todd? And here's just kind of a project schedule as of where we're at today. The council update today. Basically, what we're asking RDG, because the timeframe we're getting into as far as bidding is getting a little bit later than I myself, Todd, some of us are real excited about. We'd prefer to be bidding it, you know, kind of in this timeframe now, but based with the Vision Iowa grant and some other pieces that we're putting together, we're pushing it back. So they put together kind of a CD packet of information that they send out to a number of contractors. We're trying to send it to as many local contractors as possible, other contractors that would have interest in this type facility, just for them to put it on their radar. Just knowing, hey, we potentially have some bid documents coming forward here. Keep that open. Here's our potential timeframe. Full-fledged council presentation on March 2nd. What we'd like to do, based on any changes, on March 16th, set the date and time for a public hearing to put the project out to bid. Potential bid award would be at the April 20th council meeting. And then if we proceed forward from there, a possible issue notice to proceed in April. Shop drawings in May. Begins construction in June of 2016. Possible substantial completion by November of 2017. They're talking about a 14-month window as far as construction to complete the project. And then official, big grand opening in January of 2018. Questions, thoughts, comments on that schedule as of now? That's about the best-case scenario from a schedule as of where we're at in the process today.
How far are they along with contract documents?
50%. We kind of received the 50% documents or whatever. Assuming by, I don't have a percentage probably here by this council presentation here, we hope to be a long ways down the road of having those documents ready to go. Any final changes or whatever, so we can put this out to bid basically this week after the council sets the date and time for the hearing. 100%, yeah. We hope to be here in this range, 100% by the time we get, I think that, yeah, by that Friday or whatever, we hope to get them out.
We hope to, is RDG, I mean, are they agreeing with that? Are they on schedule?
Yes. This is a schedule, this is not Scott's schedule. This is a schedule I put together with RDG based on what's realistic, based on their team of getting it out to bid. I coordinated them the dates of council meetings and some of that stuff, but that's the schedule they said.
What's the Vision Iowa schedule?
I'm hoping to hear, based on the feedback that I've received, by this council meeting, I'm hoping I have a number for council approval.
Yeah.
By when?
By this meeting. I actually hope to have a number in the next few weeks. I hope to have a number before then. But I don't know if Vision Iowa will actually take action. They meet the second Wednesday of the month, so that'd be between these two dates. I hope to have a negotiated number even probably prior to this date. But as far as us taking action or their board approving that number from the negotiation team, realistically, we'll have a final number here.
So in a month, okay.
And what any potential gap.
And that number will be in near what we're expecting? I mean, what if they come in and we only get $100,000?
That ain't going to happen, but. I don't honestly have a specific number. I think we have pretty good basis on we're not too far away. The number we have, and I'll go through those pretty quick here. Right now, we're at $900,000 of what is what our request is. They informed me or whatever, they think that number's still a little too high, which is at like 17.5%. A number of projects that they've awarded have been in the 16% to 22% range. Most of their projects for these type facilities. So don't hold me to a number. I can't imagine less. I can't imagine less than, you know, $750,000. I'm hoping to be in the $700,000 to $800,000 range. It's a worst-case scenario.
Because we're all counting on that, but if that were to fall through, the whole, that changes the whole game plan.
Well, generally what they come back with is, I mean, your options. Your options of one, either fundraising the gap, we'll give you 60 days to fill that gap, you know, and notice to proceed. Here's the number, we gave you $700,000. You're $200,000 of what you had in your budget at $900,000. Either the city council covers that, you go and fundraise for that gap, you find another grant for that gap. We'd have to let them know, they'd say, you got 60 days, we'll finalize the contract in 60 days to cover what that gap financing is. So, then we'll have to figure out from there and where we're at. And we'll get into some of that here, probably in the other financial stuff. So, let's go ahead and go forward here, Todd. Here's some more of the interior pictures here, just to kind of point out a few highlights. We actually think these are going to be circular lights. We have not had a thorough discussion yet on the lighting, so that's one item we need to work through yet. Here's kind of those drop-down walls, Pete, you were asking about.
Yeah.
Here's one of them where that actually would fold into the ceiling, so this would drop down and be a wall here. And here's the other one back here. That would separate the other rooms, so you'd have three rooms, one, two, and three. So, this would be kind of some wood finishes up here. You see some of the stone block back here as far as the walls wooden. This is all predominantly windows back here. Next picture, Todd? Just a few different views. This is a view looking through towards the front foyer. Here's going to be kind of a gas furnace place, kind of in the middle here and a couple entry doors. So, that's going to kind of create, when you come from the other side through the foyer, kind of a wow factor looking into the room.
So, we're facing north now?
This would be facing north, correct? Yep, in the current room. Here with the setup here, you know, on a wedding style here is kind of where they show that head table up here. So, next one, Todd? Here's looking the other direction now to the east. My thing kind of goes away here. Here's those glass doors. These would be kind of like bifold doors, so this would be a large entrance here. They could bring, you know, bigger equipment, vehicle or something if you had to in on this end over here. Okay, next one. Here's kind of the outside view. Here's coming up, you know, block, stone, and some of the brick as far as kind of how they have that separated. Here's the front entrance on the north end, so you'd be able to drive through here, a drop-off standpoint. Here's one of the accesses on the side would go to the office, then of course would go around to the back. Next one, Todd? Here's the back view. Few items that we're kind of discussing and changing. At one time, they had kind of a outdoor fireplace here. We didn't see the bang and benefit of having that, kind of in this wall, smaller seating area here. That's a potential $15,000, $20,000 item, so we actually took that out as part of our design. One of the big discussions we're still having is on the outdoor deck and patio. How big should that be cost-wise, some of the elements, a small little wall in the back here? They've proposed kind of a built-in fireplace. We actually said we'd probably rather have maybe one or a couple nice portable-type fireplaces that you could have. So, if there's a different setup or something back here, you could move those to different venues or locations or setups. So, that's something that we talked about as well there too. Okay, next one? Certainly chime in if you got any questions about any elements here. And here's another view that you kind of saw earlier off the back. This is kind of more of the service-type entrance here, either going in here or this back door here. Here's basically where the kitchen is. Here's that, the sliding bifold doors once again, and just another view kind of on the other side of the building with where some of the service equipment could come in, a catering truck or whatever if they had to, to unload and park there, so. Okay? And here?
Parking would be to the north, there would be no parking to the south at all, would there?
Correct, there is not any parking as of right now in the south. What we talked about actually on the east side of the building, the north side's predominantly, you know, where the access drive comes, and all the parking would be kind of off to the east of that, kind of maybe kind of where that service entrance is. It's kind of a potential overflow, and it's tough to find it back on the other side here. Yeah, back on the other side of the building there.
To the west?
There's no view of it really.
East? Oh, look at you, Brad. Yeah.
Yeah, kind of over there, maybe overflow-type parking if we needed more parking. Oh, yeah, there's the parking lot there, yep.
Nice, thank you, Brad.
It's looking to the north.
And the trail?
Kind of northeast.
Trail would propose it running between the pond and the patio?
Yeah, on the back side, yep, down by the water. The Trails Committee is actually working on that. We did get a first glimpse of a rec-trail proposal from Beck Engineering last month. The Rec Trails Committee kind of had some thoughts, ideas, modifications to that. So, they're kind of working on a few changes there and kind of working through those elements as well, so. And then kind of on just some of the financial to let you know kind of, you know, where we're at as of right now. What you see here, and this is tough to see, this is the estimate that was included as part of our study by Stecker-Harmsen, where, you know, we had the $5.3 million figure. And basically where we're at as of today is as far as some of our funding. With fundraising and pledges, we're a little over $960,000 that we have pledged or committed at this point. Based on a request, we're right at $900,000 in the CAT grant that we're requesting. Other funding sources, hotel motel tax, a couple other grants, furniture and equipment out of loss that we had talked about, about $200,000. And then the city match as far as financing would be a little over $3.1 million right now, or just short of $3.2. So, with those all together brings us close to about $5.2 million. What we had to remove out of this that wasn't to be included as part of the CAT grant was the preliminary design cost. Due to the fact we had that done already and that's paid for, we could not go back and recoup that as part of the CAT grant, so that's why that's not part of that $5.3 million. That's why it's slightly lesser or smaller, lesser probably isn't a word. So, with that, any questions or other specifics that you have as of right now? Anything in the building you want to look at closer or talk about or? Got some of the items on the floor over there. Basically for the flooring, a couple different items that we had talked about, actually in the main great room, it's kind of a woodgrain-type tile floor. This would be kind of the darker color. We're looking, we have a lighter color, but it was almost too light, so we're going on a little bit lighter color than that, and they're putting kind of a design together for us. Then actually in the front entrance way, it'd be a different tile, but they're going to kind of create a design for us there as well. There's some of the stone and the block. That's on the exterior, both of those. And that's also interior as well. Fireplace, a lot of big items are actually in there too, so.
Nice.
That'd be a good shot.
Scott, could you repeat the, the, the dollar figures for various sources of?
The fundraising pledges, a little over $963,000. CAT grant request, $900,000. Other funding sources, $200,000. City match, $3,115,000 approximately. $3,115,000. So, we're close to about $5.2 million.
Have we, there was a request through the SADC about participation and more donations towards this. Have we gotten any response for that?
We did, actually, last time it went down, we had probably 15 additional individual donations and pledges towards the project. Whether that put us over the hump, that's one of the items that they requested, was some more individual donations. We're kind of on hold right now until we, our hope is to get a number here in the near future. And then that's something, I guess, from a council standpoint that we need to talk about as to, if it's $50,000, $100,000, $150,000, whatever that gap is to our grant, do we go and try to fundraise that gap? Is the city interests are willing to cover that gap more than the $3,115,000? Those are items, I guess, that we'll need council direction on before we proceed. But at this point, they're to the point of willing to negotiate and give us a number, so. At this point, we don't have to do any additional fundraising unless we choose to, and we get a number back from them on how we want to proceed.
My last comment is, the lodge, we've said this before, but this is not a lodge look. We need to change their name, and whether that happens later or sooner, in my mind, the sooner the better.
That is not a set name.
I know.
It's a Mike Bell name, to be honest with you.
I know, but.
The lodge at the crossing.
I do not think it's structured that looks like this.
It does have the prairie themes, I mean, the colors and the stone and the brick we're going with, you know, the look certainly has kind of a prairie look to it. It doesn't have as much, I mean, it has wood on the outside and some wood, you know, contents on the inside, but a full-fledged lodge wouldn't look, yeah, probably not. It's a little bit of both.
Prairie Winds is already taken, so we can't have that.
We don't want that.
We're good, yep, yep. I think that'll start to come to mind, maybe come up with some ideas on how we can maybe find a name for it.
Well, anyway.
Prairie Lodge? I'm just kidding. Anyway, thank you, Scott, for that.
You told me I can't use crossing and crossroads anymore, so I know I can't call it that.
Thank, what's that?
The Pond.
The Pond.
Thank you to Zach and Brad and Todd and Scott for continuing all the efforts on that core group of coming to the final design. I appreciate it.
So, if you've got more questions, comments, or you want to see more pictures, let me know. We certainly have some different graphics and details if you want to see it. But then hopefully Mike on March 2nd too will come back with some more information and more full-fledged presentation on some of the details too, so.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number six on our agenda is the possible closed session for the city manager's evaluation. Scott, would you like to go into a closed session for your evaluation?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, and a roll call, please. Randy?
Hi.
Zach?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Pete?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
And it's up to you who you want to stay. All right, we got it, and we are back live, we are on a closed session. In regards to the city manager's evaluation, he has scored very good, and on a, I would like to share that our city is doing great things, and we hear compliments frequently, and it's not only a reflection upon the council and the mayor, it is a reflection on all of our city employees, and we thank Scott for the hard work that he does every day. So, very good on your evaluation, and thank you. Last on our agenda would be the comments. Do we have anything from Todd? Counsel, any comments? Yeah, seems kind of slow, but it's not. Things are going to be picking up here real quick. I do not have anything either. So, on that note, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Thank you, and a roll call, please. Greg?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Greg, oops, sorry.
Hi.
Zach?
Hi.
Randy?
Hi.
Thank you, and we are adjourned.
We're not using that first name.
No, it sounds different, doesn't it?